Over here, so you don't have to come today. You don't have to come today.
Recreation, yes, this is Connie. Connie, I'm saying.
Fonte.
Yeah, you don't have to come to City. Oh, yeah, I told her, yeah, we didn't have to come. God, yes. Oh, God, yes. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. We'll make sure everything gets handled.
Yeah, I get nervous.
Tell her not to. We'll make sure everything gets handled.
All right.
Yeah.
It's like speedo. I was bad.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, they have skeeters. They started with the tubes. They were tubes on. I thought that would work out.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, I can go home now. I got my question answered.
Gunball machine?
No.
What's going on this week? Where's Cody?
Cody who?
It's not nice.
That's not funny.
That's not nice.
She coming or what?
I don't know.
I'm fighting people off for this chair here.
I figured she told you before she told me.
I texted her four times, she didn't answer me.
I'll see, I'll think about it.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. I haven't seen Kevin in a while. Is he still around or what? Oh, yeah.
I asked my question. Let me ask, can I ask another, are you guys live yet?
No.
Cool. I'm gonna ask another question.
Hopefully, they're all alive up there. Filling all those empty spaces on the Rec. Commission.
No, I am not. I can get up there. I know, but I will try my darkest.
Yeah, you're better off.
Counsel, we're one minute away if we can get those mic screens.
Bye.
No, I'm going home.
All right, counsel, the clock has struck thirty after, so I would ask you to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening to those that are here with us in person, as well as those tuning in online. I'd like to pass it over to Clerk Tomasic to please call roll.
Schumate?
Here.
Cox?
Here.
McNabb?
Here.
Molnar? Valentine?
Here.
Walden?
Here.
Wood?
Here.
Do we have a motion to excuse Councilman Molnar?
Motion to excuse Councilman Molnar.
Seconds.
Discussion. Katie, please call a roll.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Counsel and members of public, in front of you, you have this evening's agenda. I've received a few requests for updates I'd like you to consider. So I'll go through those updates, and we can motion to add them if you so choose. Item number one is our city attorney is not able to be with us today. And he has, in the packet, a request for a closed session. So he has asked if we could move that request for closed session right after public comment. We can call him in via your line for that closed session before he boards his airplane. So, ask number one would be a motion to move city attorney's request for closed session to after public comment.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Motion.
Second the motion.
Motion by Cox, seconded by McNabb.
That's after the first public comment.
After the first public comment. Any discussion on that item? Katie, please call roll.
McNabb?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes. Motion to seat Councilperson Molnar. Second. Second.
Second by Walden. Katie, we can call roll whenever you are ready.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Great. Next request we have is our Finance Director McEwen was unable to be here for the last meeting. And she wanted to give a more discussion on the city's investment portfolio. So I'd ask that you grant a motion to add an item to our Finance Director McEwen's section of the agenda to be discussion on city's investment portfolios.
Make that motion.
Motion by McNabb, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Cox, any discussion? Whenever you're ready, Katie, we'll have you call roll.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Great, so Amy will have that as item B on your report this evening. And then, lastly, we have Chief Bullard, who has asked for a update on the agenda. Chief Bullard, do you want to describe how you'd like that framed for counsel if they so chose for a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mero, it's a proposed or motion or request for the, an action item to hire a full-time police officer with the city.
So counsel, if you so chose, we'd have item D, we'd need a motion to add item D, which is full-time hire.
I'll motion to add item D. Support.
Okay, we have support. Any discussion on that item? And counsel, you should have a printed copy from Chief Bullard on your table in front of you. Katie, whenever you're ready, we'll have you call roll.
Valentine?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes. And then, just a heads up, we don't need to revise our agenda for it, but we did get another Recreation Commission application in. So that was sent to you via email. I already had one appointment request under my report this evening, so you'll have a second one to consider when we get there. Any other requests for the agenda? All right, well, we have an approved agenda, and that will bring us to our public comment section. Members of public, we'd love to hear from you. Please state your name and address at that mic, and make sure that light is green.
Good evening, everyone. Dennis Bosmer, 29775 Point Drive, here in Gibraltar. Organized a blood drive with the American Red Cross, the Wind Out of Banner of Nation, for Tomasic, the city of Gibraltar. I spoke with the mayor about this, and the Parks and Recreation Director booked this before she left. So it's, and with the Gibraltar School District. So I wanted to partner with the various communities. And that's gonna be April 11th, so we're about four and a half weeks out. There's a lot of seats available. I'd like to promote that here. Like stuff at the end of the meeting as well, so as to turn in late or what have you. I got some flyers printed, I wanna make sure they're posted everywhere. So at the Gil Telvert Community Center, Saturday, 10:00 a.m. until, it's a Friday, 10:00 till 4:00. I think from 3:00 to 4:00, it's already booked, so I think there's like 10 or 11 spots. There's 36 left. I'd like to see all the beds full, because people get there, and sometimes they can't give when they get there, and we just wanna make sure we got enough pints for the... And as divisive as things are in this nature that we're in right now, and we all live daily, I think this is one thing we can all herald around and like gather around, is giving back to our fellow human beings here in America. The blood's important, we all know that, and I'd just like to see if we can get your support for that, and tell all your friends and neighbors, please. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dennis. Are there any further public comments at the opening public comment section? We will have another one at the close of our meeting, so without further ado, we will close public comments. And that will bring us to the shifted agenda item, which is from our city attorney. Specifically, it's a request for closed session to discuss a written confidential legal opinion. So counsel, we would need a motion to enter closed session. Before we do that, we would, probably just for the sake of our residents that are here in attendance in person, we can go up to the conference room, as we would traditionally do for closed sessions, so that you all can remain seated during that closed session. So counsel, if you so chose, we'll need a motion to enter closed session. We'll go up to the conference room. He's gonna dial in our city attorney, and then we will return from closed session whenever we're ready and get back to the agenda.
Motion to enter closed session.
Second.
Second by Molnar, any discussion? Katie, please call a roll.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
All right, members of public, we will be going upstairs, and then we'll return after that closed session is complete. Feel free to stay and make yourselves comfortable. Thank you.
Follow the leader, ain't ya? Follow the leader? It look like you are. Hey, y'all come back when you can't stay so long. You hold on the porch for us. You making me Sergeant Oars?
Are you leaving already?
Hate to break up, hate to break up the party. He's not here tonight. Too many footload to take a nap up there.
I think you're right.
How about we sue there all the time, we told you to sue.
Well, I'm sure there.
Hopefully, Crystal has another baby. I saw him likes the seals and the sharks, the bottom head sharks.
Yeah, 'cause they're losing. You're one of these, this one, the union.
Well, they do, but from the first one, they drop off.
You gotta cove your meaning out something.
I'm sorry, yeah. During a closed session, whatever.
I talked to your brother.
Yeah, but unfortunately, you can't have calories.
Couldn't tell me what you're gonna do for me.
You wanna use this for a table?
Well, I'm not a registered voter.
You're a registered.
Oh. I don't care for mountains. There's a place where I have the same fissures.
There's like a place. I was the part that's custard.
Ah?
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause this house, this house also. Oh, I didn't wanna ask, right? Just only you. Yeah, yeah.
That's how I, I don't want, like, I have to go get it, 'cause I like it better.
Hey, Dennis, you better not disappoint me, boy.
So it's like two forty, so we get back to you.
Um, there's three seats, and I think, um, Mr. Valentine, you can sit.
Just for you to run?
Yeah. I'm talking about somebody, so yeah.
You were on it though.
Hey. Could be Dale put one in?
What, did he?
For, um... Counsel.
Okay.
Did he?
I don't think, I don't know. I didn't answer.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah. I was hoping for interest.
Could be put one in?
I don't know. Katie's the one that asks. Katie's the one that asks. I don't know what to say. The only person I know about, because I was actually there, was Mr. Fonte, so.
Hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
Mayor. Ain't it?
I don't know if he's gonna do that or treasure. He took both. I don't know which one he's gonna pick.
So this is for you to run?
Yeah. I don't know if that's true or not.
I don't think he knows yet.
Oh, so he might stay for treasure for one more year.
Two more years.
Well, yeah, that's one more term.
What did he want to run for? For his time?
Five years?
Yeah, no, then. I don't think he's been there seven years. So you lost the horse.
Pre-elected, pre-elected. Pre-elected. What's wrong with that? I'm not the person to come over here and walk you over.
Let me tell you.
Like I said, I stay in town, I know he drives. But I mean...
You know, okay.
How'd a party drop you there?
I did, Katie and I stayed behind, both out in the fort. Not sure we could stay out, hope for the residents.
I didn't know why.
Really?
When was it?
Last Thursday or Tuesday.
Tuesday. Tuesday. We're keeping it small?
Ah?
We kept it small?
So they got open, you fill it for a few days, I forgot, Scott. They can never come back. Sydney, they'll just, you know, wait, but they'll come back, come back part-time or whatever. But they had, I mean, I said, if they could never come back tomorrow. Which I think is wrong. You kind of represent, if you're, if you like, in the skills.
How much? I don't know.
Who knows? Remember when my couple was in Sydney, you turned me around. I remember all this talk, that's why.
Taking a flight or something.
He's on video.
That would be mine, it's super fat. Is there something wrong with it?
He won't be gone, he's gone what, a month?
Yes, he's gone this whole month, and then you're gone the next week. Okay.
And give him pictures. I'll give it to you to give to him.
That would be good.
All right?
Yep.
Because everything's good so far.
That's good to hear.
The doors will be ordered or something. I tried to put all this paperwork together.
Yeah.
We sent his next building in. All right. Put it together.
I appreciate it. I don't think I'm getting Dairy Queen.
They're going now.
I know. We should all leave and go get Dairy Queen and come back.
As soon as you walk out that door.
Yeah.
Oh, no, you're fine.
It's just a treat if we make it out of time. It's a little cold sometimes. It's a beautiful day, too.
I stuck it, gave a clock, probably thirty-five people lines.
Oh, so it might still be open, there might be people online that they have to serve. All the best Dairy Queens.
They're like, two, they haven't stopped, and we put the truck. They had that meeting.
How long has the actual dairy been?
Okay. Years, it was, they sold it for a hundred ten thousand, a hundred, probably, years ago.
To the people that come.
How long has it been here?
Sixty, middle of sixty.
Yeah, but I mean, they sold, they sold it, it's, okay. That's all, they weren't asking that much.
It's honestly not a good place to have a, with the same time that we're gonna start to walk Dairy Queen's in there. He's like, just wait.
Well, I wonder, when they got, to get the line going, I wonder if she's standing up there getting signatures.
What do you got?
I didn't realize who sells that, that's the past. Who sells this?
Landis' mother.
Oh, she does.
She lives right there.
I know.
You know where he's here now?
Or, yeah.
Katie's, I don't know, I miss you.
He's a hyerman master or something else.
Oh, is he really?
Yeah, so. Southwest side of Michigan.
That's a nice place. On South Lake.
Huh?
South Lake, just pull, just pull aside.
Oh, good for him, okay.
'Cause he lived and do tons of apple, just be, just, just, yeah. I talked to him, but, uh, about two weeks ago.
Yeah, he likes it?
Yeah. That's a big place.
Yeah.
What was his job?
It sure is.
Slipping a lot of apple orchards through the days, making that place. He used to ride there every, every, just for a weekend, probably, for fifteen years.
It's ready up there.
ABC.
Okay. What caused you to ask me?
Between South Lake and.
Come on, do you have a, like?
Well. Great. Travel, you know, the old home car, right there, you know? We put our, I think, we stayed there, and we walked down the beach, and we ran a little bit.
Nice.
Then we came, next year, she had a big, it's a slapboard for oversize, like, and stuff. Went out there, uh, last year, and placed a meeting, and it was over, and the lowest place in there is probably a hundred fifty thousand.
I, yeah.
It's just, I really like to buy it.
It's pretty up there.
Buy a quick.
I don't think I'll see one.
What's it do? I have some, like, that's projected over.
For that, we're cities. Birthday gift, some, hard dollar. Yeah, I'll figure out who's, uh. Is that your wife or son, or a charity?
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's her, that's, that's her thing, man, long, sir.
You bring that to your position?
Yeah, they're my current. So, I'll, I'll get with them after I'm here.
Yeah. Yeah, you'll fill that quick.
Turned out to do it on, in the city.
No, 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 what, no.
Huh? Meaning no good. Fish it.
Yeah, he's rich, he wants to thank you for it, Bill. Welcome, going to you guys. All right, listen, he appreciates it.
Things being new.
Ice cream's getting filled up. All right, counsel, we got those mics green. We will require a motion to return from closed session to our regular city council agenda.
Motion to return to closed session.
Second.
Second by Walden and Katie, whenever you are ready.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulnar?
Yes.
Shumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Great. Uh, counsel, I'd like to turn your attention to our next agenda item, and that is our consent agenda. Uh, we have items A through G. Item A, bills reference number seventeen A, seventeen B. Item B, payroll nine four two, nine four three, nine four four, and nine four five. C, city council minutes of two twenty-four, twenty-five. D, city council study session minutes of two twenty-four, twenty-five. E, beautification commission minutes of three, three, twenty, twenty-five. F, recreation commission minutes of three, four, twenty, twenty-five. And G, fire payroll February twenty, twenty-five. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A through G?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wood.
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Great, Katie, whenever you are ready.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulnar?
Yes.
Shumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
All right, counsel, next, uh, is our communications, for which we do not have any this evening. Uh, so that'll bring me to my report. Uh, counsel, I have items A through D for you. Uh, item A is gonna be appointment for Parks and Recreation Commission. Uh, exciting times. Uh, Katie, keep me honest here, I believe we have seven already appointed. Uh, and we've actually gotten two additional applications. So counsel, in your packet and sent subsequently, uh, I am requesting you to consider a motion to appoint Deana Dow and Dennis Bosmer.
Motion to appoint.
Motion.
Second.
Second by Mulnar. Any discussion on those appointments? I just wanna thank, uh, Deana and Dennis for putting themselves forth, uh, to be a part of that commission. I see Austin, uh, in the room as well, uh, Parks and Recreation Director, that's been appointed by counsel, so. Exciting to see now nine commission members of the eleven target. Uh, so with that, any, not further any discussion, then I'll let Katie call roll whenever she's ready.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulnar?
Yes.
Shumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Fantastic. Uh, item B on my agenda, uh, is going to be an appointment for Infrastructure Advisory Committee. Uh, counsel, I know we had discussed publicly in our last meeting, the importance that City Administrator Blackburn is working to drive our Infrastructure Advisory Committee touchpoints. Uh, but we do have, uh, a resident, uh, who wants to, uh, be a part of the Infrastructure Advisory Committee. Uh, Mr. Scott Schultz, uh, has great experience and expertise that I think aligns well with the committee. So we'd be looking for a motion to appoint Mr. Scott Schultz, who is in the room with us today, uh, right back there, uh, to the, uh, Infrastructure Advisory Committee.
Motion to appoint Scott.
Second.
Motion by McNabb, second by Mulnar. Any discussion? Katie, please call roll.
Okay.
Yeah, please.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I, I hope, I'm, I'm excited by this, looking forward to it, and looking forward to our next, uh, hopefully, we can get one scheduled today. Uh, pick a date for the next, uh, Infrastructure Advisory Committee meeting, so that we can, we can, uh, put our, our collective efforts, uh, you know, in, soon.
I love that. Thank you, Mr. Schultz, for putting yourself forward. Any further discussion on this matter? And Katie, whenever you're ready, we'll have you call roll.
Mulnar?
Yes.
Shumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Great, motion carried, congratulations. Um, we will be in touch, we have your contacts, we'll be in touch, and to Councilman Mulnar's point, uh, we, we are adamant about getting that meeting on the books, and making sure there's regularity to that. Um, next item on my agenda, uh, for this evening is administrative updates. Uh, counsel, I have one administrative update for you, uh, and you'll see that there's information from Finance Director McEwen, including your packet. Uh, the Rotary, uh, President had reached out, uh, mentioning that they may have interest in purchasing the land by the Dairy Queen. I know there's been discussions amongst council, including our strategic priorities, about what we could potentially try and utilize that land for. Um, this would obviously be one avenue for council to consider. Uh, if council is interested in, uh, entertaining a purchase from Rotary, uh, I wanted to include the financials from you, and Amy, please feel free to speak to any specifics you'd like there. And if not, council may have any questions for you. But you'll see in the packet, the financial breakdown, maybe you could just highlight kinda how you laid that out for council, just to make sure they have an awareness.
I just have the park purchases, one and two, um, the two percent interest to pay back the land fund, summer taxes on both of them, and then the golf outing funds that we brought in. So it's kinda just laid out that way.
Uh, counsel, a couple things that I would say we should consider. Number one, uh, we obviously have had discussions on the land, and our concerns around the dollar amount of purchase and the money that is still owed to our land fund. Uh, but I wanna make sure you have the financial breakdown. Number two, I know we talked about, uh, what potential uses for the land we might consider. Uh, I don't know if Councilman Cox, or Councilman Mulnar, any other Infrastructure Advisory Committee members, I think, are part of some of that discussion around the proximity of the pump station and potential applications. If I recall, I think it was tough to justify the financial feasibility in the near term, but I can't remember all the specifics, so if you wanna speak to that, please do.
I think you're accurate, it, it, um, we're just throwing ideas out there, what potential that property may be used for. We don't have a lot of hard evidence, or, uh, even budgeted costs, to figure out what process might happen with that. So, um, I'm still quite interested in utilizing that property for something like that, if it's attainable. But we've been dealing with a lot of other things where we haven't delved into that yet, so.
Agreed.
That's where I'm at.
Um, maybe some next steps, if you, if you are interested in considering this pathway, would be to obviously make sure the land is appraised. Uh, talk to our assessor about tax considerations, given the five oh one C three nature of the potential purchaser. But I, I'm gonna open up to council to see if there's any directional interest or guidance.
Is, is it, what is it zoned for in our master plan? Do we, is it zoned as a, as a park, or, or is it, um?
Can you confirm that, Mike? I don't know if we have, I don't have that answer on top of mind.
Oh, yeah, zoning maps, uh, not far.
I think it's residential, but I can't see from here.
I know Rotary's interest is to, number one, potentially have this satisfy their address requirement. Uh, two, to, uh, turn it into a park, uh, that could be memorialized for that purpose. And then, three, from what I understand, I believe they had some sort of financial contribution towards the purchase, tied to the golf outing, uh, funds that were raised, and obviously, uh, utilized for the purchase, so. Just a couple pieces of background information for you. Just looking for some direction, we could have the assessor take a look.
Are they stating that what they've already donated to the city should be applied towards that purchase?
Uh, no detailed discussion, and I, I was not asked or told that.
I, I, I think we, we ought to, um, hear, hear what, uh, what it's worth, and, uh, what they're interested or, or willing to, to pay for it. And then, check our master plan to see if we have a, um, a determined use for it already. Uh, and then, maybe take a little bit of closer study at what value it would be for an ancillary, uh, sanitary type of, of use. Um, I don't know how much work goes into each of those items. I got an idea that the, the last part is probably the heaviest lift.
Yep.
Um, but the other stuff should be, uh, relatively simple to, to wrap, wrap our arms around, and if there's a, a net long-term value at the end of that, um, you don't, seems like that would provide some direction for us.
I like it. Counsel, do you agree with those three steps? And maybe we can get to work on those three, and then give an update, uh, at our next council meeting, as to where we are? We could have, uh, Rotary President come and answer any questions, perhaps, at that time, once we're getting more information? Okay. I don't think we need any formal action, um, other than just the direction from council is to investigate those three areas.
No, I, I think, um, from, from my perspective, anyway, when, when that land was purchased in the first place, it, it, um, probably wasn't the, the use of funds that many of us up here would have, would have thought was the appropriate expenditure, but it, it occurred in a previous administration, and, uh, to determine whether or not it was, it's, you got a practical use for it, or, or whether it's best to bring us back to where we were a couple years ago, and so, get those few pieces of information, go from there.
I like it. Awesome. Uh, last item on my report, uh, as promised, we, uh, make sure we provide updates on our strategic priorities, and I have a couple things I'll flag today. Um, for the water loss audit, uh, with Benesh and the flood control, uh, as we mentioned, with the, uh, the new meters, uh, that were installed, Brown Sun Meter BR one and Gibraltar Meter GR two. With those replacements, we're capturing water usage that was previously detected, and we'll have an update in beginning of April to evaluate any change in our water loss, so Mike's on the ball for that. Uh, leak detection began January twenty-seventh by Benesh, uh, and City Administrator Blackburn's got a written update for you, on the leak detection activities. In addition, uh, we have a couple budget updates that I'd like to provide to you, so, uh, counsel, last, uh, budget cycle. Obviously, we're very grateful for the money that we got, million dollars for our West Jefferson Water Main, but if you recall, we had gone to all of our elected officials, uh, Congresswoman Dingell, Senator Peters, at the time, uh, House Representative Churches, uh, Senator Camilleri, with the unified requests. Uh, so Mike's, uh, working on submitting those, uh, requests this, uh, cycle. We have a March seventeenth deadline for those. I just wanna remind you of some of the things that we had top of mind. Uh, we had, uh, the water main, obviously, which we, we secured funding for. We had storm water and sanitary sewer issues, um, meaning, uh, some of the outfall valves or other, uh, dollar applications would be very advantageous for us. We had the middle Gibraltar Road Bridge, um, which has been in poor critical condition, and repeated inspection reports. Obviously, we've talked about our bridges and having eight of them, and the responsibility of those, but that's gonna be a priority one, given that it's a main artery in and out of the city of Gibraltar. Uh, we also included, uh, another bridge, Young Drive Bridge, uh, we flagged roads and the poor condition of our roads. So I just wanna reorient you to the, the budget request that we'll be putting forth, we'll be, obviously, doing those in order of priority. We worked last cycle on crafting the language, but, Mike, anything you'd add to that?
Um, no. No, I think you pretty much covered everything.
Cool. So, uh, so the goal is, I'll, I'll be meeting with Senator Peters, uh, Congresswoman Dingell, uh, and House Representative, uh, Camilleri, uh, to make sure we're just putting a unified ask of these priority projects. I think we've articulated very clearly the need, and the dollars related to the need, again, we're grateful for the last cycle, uh, and we'll, hopefully, we'll get some more funding, uh, in this current cycle. Um, next item is gonna be infrastructure advisory, uh, work, oh, I would say improvement work at large. Uh, for the Horse Island Bridge, uh, City Administrator Blackburn, uh, got a report from Collins Engineering, uh, and is making sure that council has that report, and I know, if you wanna speak to that?
Um, just the, the report's in the packet, and we're, we can just discuss it when I get there.
Cool. So stay tuned for an update on that, uh, but good to see that report come through. Uh, second item is, uh, our lead lines. Uh, bids received, and City Administrator Blackburn is working with the Infrastructure Advisory Committee members to review questions in context of the bidder process. Um, so I know Councilman Cox, uh, Treasure Fonte, and others have been very close to that work with City Administrator Blackburn, I hope that continues before any meetings and, uh, action obviously prevail. I know Mr. Sont, uh, amongst others, have been, uh, close to that activity.[1658.95] I know Mr. Sont, amongst others, have been close to that activity. Replace West Jefferson Water Main using our grant funds. Fishbeck is the lowest bidder, and obviously that's on our agenda this evening. Pump station, great to see that construction is ongoing. Lids and concrete are installed week of 3/10, which is this week. You want to give an update on that?
Concrete was poured today. The lids were installed last week. Concrete was poured today, so they are, they won't be around Tuesday or Wednesday because the concrete's got hardened. So they'll be back later on in the week.
It's good to see that being executed. Thank you. Next is parking lots. I know the City Commissioner Blackburn's working on the specs and hopefully in partnership with our infrastructure committee members. Roofs, working with the Infrastructure Advisory Committee, including Mr. Sont on specs for that. HVAC, new units are being installed over the next one to two weeks. A lot of these are obviously utilizing the DDA funds under the scope of the bond that we had unlocked. I know there's been discussions from Chief Bullard on the, the traffic studies, so that's commented on here. Software for invoice approvals, so this is happening. This is the month of software for invoice approval, so good, exciting thing. Amy, anything you want to comment on there? We're all excited about that.
Nope, just she was in today going over it with everybody, and will hopefully be utilizing it starting tomorrow.
Great. So with all the reviews on purchasing policies and approvals of invoices, this will be a tremendous step in the right direction with technology to drive accountability in that process beyond everything council's already done. So thank you, Finance Director McEwen. We have a investment performance. Finance Director McEwen will talk about that. Zoning ordinance, we got our, our grant. Jane Dixon, our city planner, has been working on driving meetings there. Some of you are involved in that committee. Gas inventory, City Commissioner Blackburn's evaluating bid requirements, and I know had one quote already received and was working with Corrigan on revising the quote. And then we have actions on professional services that should be considered. City planner and assessor, obviously with the assessor, we had the approved contract, and that approved contract window, I believe, was targeted by April 1st for that new agreement. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. Right now, WCA has a contract for them to sign and bring back for us to sign right now.
Awesome. Department head reviews, we're getting to that time of year where we're going to have our department head reviews, so City Commissioner Blackburn's going to be driving that process. Council, we targeted having all that information available at latest early April, so that we're ahead of the six-month mark for that. And I know we had discussion, study sessions around that, but it's critical that City Commissioner Blackburn's taking point, but obviously he will be reviewed by council as well. And then the other ones, I won't really comment on other than say, Austin, again, congratulations on your appointment. I know you showed up at the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, got a chance to meet everybody, so we're, we're grateful to have you in the seat, and obviously we have action related to that this evening. If you think about the forensic account audit, I know we were told we're, we're close to getting an update there, so I would expect an update here in a coming meeting for council. And then the last thing I wanted to flag to you too is we'll have to take a look at a cell tower topic. So simply put, we need to work with council to get direction on a cell tower. There was a, a previous lease agreement that was in place for quite a long window, decades long, and it's coming up on a requirement to revisit that agreement. So we'd like to pull at least one or two council members into that process. City Commissioner Blackburn's obviously leading the charge there, but we need to get that landed, because there's some timelines that we need to meet to make sure there's no lapse in that from a new agreement perspective.
So is that land that we own that we lease to them?
Do you want to speak to that, City Commissioner Blackburn?
No, that is land that we lease from them. It was a third, it was a 30-year lease. The lease is up in 2027, but the cell tower company, if the lease is not renewed and the tower has to be taken down, they need two years to do it. That's why it's up now. And I haven't had much luck with communication with the landowner. Tried to schedule meetings to have an introductory meeting and see what we can do, and it's been un, unfruitful, to say the least, so.
So does the cell tower company in turn lease it from us? Is it a three-party lease?
The cell tower company pays us a monthly fee.
And that monthly fee is more than what we pay?
When we lease the land, we, we lease it for a dollar a year for 30 years.
Got it. Okay. Understood.
So a historical agreement was reached. It's time to revisit said agreement. I'd like to pull at least one or two council members into this process to be a part of that with City Commissioner Blackburn. So just, we'll, we'll be in touch after this meeting to make sure we can work on that. So council, that was the overview of the strategic priorities. I want to flag a couple of updates. Any questions, comments for me? All right. Let's go ahead and turn it over to our council reports. Councilman Valentine, do you want to talk to us about Recreation Commission and 33rd District Court?
I don't have any report regarding the 33rd District Court, and I'm going to let the interim director, Austin Reynolds, do the Recreation Commission report.
Fantastic.
Austin, not yet.
I like the initiative, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're going to open up to you right after the Parks and, or right after the council reports are closed. Any questions for Councilman Valentine? Councilman Wood, talk to us about beautification and historical museum.
Okay, very simply, the plants have all been ordered for beautification. The Kubota is all set to go. We will be trying it out on Thursday. Sheila and I are going to take it for a spin and see what happens. And I want to say thank you to Rich and John Sont and our DPW and all of the guys that made this happen. We are excited and hopefully we can drive it and we'll be successful with that. We're hoping to get a little trailer to put on the back of it so we can drag our plants around. So we're, we're not done, but we're still working on that.
I love that.
So that's it for beautification, and the museum was open last Sunday, and we had a really great turnout, I think. There were a lot of people that came up there, and we also received some more item donations, so that's always exciting. And a gentleman did come with some items brought from Trenton's Molius and Elliot's store. I mean, like, old timers know what that is, but, and while we, he was talking about it, I was going to take it just in case, you know, but the historian from Trenton showed up, and he was excited that he got something out of it. So everybody got something last Sunday, and that's it. That's it for the report.
That's awesome. Any questions for Councilman Wood?
Uh, just to say that I have a couple of trailers that'd probably fit that Kubota over at the boatyard, and you're welcome to use them anytime you want.
We'll look at that.
Okay.
What day is the first ride taking place on the Kubota?
Thursday. Sheila and I are going to try it out.
That's fantastic.
See what happens.
Awesome. Any further questions or comments for Councilman Wood? Councilman Cox, planning DDA?
No report.
Any questions for Councilman Cox? Councilman McNabb, Waterways and ADW?
Yeah, we will soon be having a meeting with the Waterways Commission. The fellows will be getting back around April, May. ADW, I have a biannual report I have to get together for the 1st of April. We start working on that.
Awesome.
And that's all I have to offer at this point.
Great. Any questions for Councilman McNabb? Councilman Mollner?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of things, and I'll, I'll look forward to speaking with Austin, our, our Recreation Director, on these, as well as their recreation-type activities. One of them is Saturday, April 5th. Reminder that there's the Tiller Steer Aluminum Boat Race, that proceeds are going to go to the Gibraltar Duck Hunters. That, that, that race is not just a race for who's the fastest. It's going to be a lot of fun. It's the opening of the boating season, so don't worry if you have a 15-horse. You're still welcome to come and hang out, and we'll have all kinds of awards that can still be won, even, even if you're not the fastest boat out there. Next one is, I'll do these in chronological order, April 19th. I know that that's the date of some of our Easter activities already. It is also the date of Captain Steve's annual fishing competition, walleye, walleye competition, and fish fry. So hoping that after the Easter egg drop, or whatever else is scheduled on that day, some people will want to come over and at least have a fish dinner. But over three years, that's raised, I, I, I want to say north of 26,000 over three years for our first responders, and each year has gotten progressively higher and higher in the, in the value it brings in and the amount of people that participate. So looking forward to heavy participation on April 19th, and if folks want to come over after the Easter festivities to have a fish dinner, it's a pretty good time up at Captain Jim's. Let's see, the last one that I have is a ways away from now, but just hoping to get it on, on some folks' agendas. Sunday, June 8th, around 8:00 a.m. is our annual run paddle for Cure HHT, and that'll be hosted. The, the race will take place in the same location. Been in contact with, with Chief Bullard, and the after-party will be at GBY instead of Captain Jim's, though, this year, so one slight difference. But that's the run paddle for the Cure for HHT, which is something that a couple of our residents, Jim and Lindsay Voss, had. And so in their thoughts and, and memories and, and whatnot, it's Sunday, June 8th, 8:00 a.m. for the run and kayak. That's all I have.
Love it. Thank you. Any questions for Councilman Mollner? Councilman Walden?
Uh, just one thing, doesn't really, it's not really city business. Last April, I don't know if you remember, I came up to the podium. I grew up in Newport, and last April, there was an incident where a lady drove her car through the Swamp Boat Club, killing a four, eight-year-old, and injuring 15 other people. The two, two younger kids that were killed were students at Flat Rock. If you haven't been following it, just as an update, Thursday, she was convicted of all charges. So just wanted you guys to have that update. Something that was close to home and neighboring community felt it, so just keep them on your thoughts as they adjust to the, adjust to the changes, and that's all I got.
Tragic and sending love. Thank you for bringing that up. Any questions for Councilman Walden? All right, Austin, now it's your time to shine. We have our interim Parks and Recreation Director with obviously action coming on tonight's agenda, but floor is yours.
All right. Council Mayor, thank you. I would, once again, like to say thank you for having me on and giving me this opportunity to serve the city of Gibraltar. So for the Rec Commission meeting from March 4th, we had, I was there, Austin Reynolds, Michael Blackburn, Paula Mullins, Tracy Garant, Connie Bonds, Cheryl Putz, and Patrick Valentine were all present. The meeting essentially was to prepare for and get ready for the Easter event. The Easter event will be on Saturday, April 19th, 2025, and will include an Easter egg hunt, marshmallow drop, food trucks, music, and a raffle of bikes and Easter egg baskets. Ticket sales for the raffle will be from 10:00 a.m. until noon. The Easter egg hunt for one- to three-year-olds will be at 11:00 a.m. The marshmallow drop will be at noon, and the raffle will be directly following the marshmallow drop. At present, the Recreation Commission will try to firm up food vendors, Easter basket donations, and donation for bicycles. The helicopter for the drop has already been acquired. A flyer is being drafted and will be sent to the schools and a letter requesting donations. A DJ has been acquired as well. There will not be a pancake breakfast this year. New members of the Rec Commission are Connie Bonds, Tracy Garant, Cheryl Putz, myself, Austin Reynolds, Paula Mullins, and the next meeting is April 1st, 2025.
That's fantastic. Council, any questions or comments for Parks and Recreation Director?
Very good for your first report.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Plus, you got two new ones, too.
Yep, that's right. And we also have the two new approved Rec Commission members.
We're grateful to have you here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That will transition us to our city attorney report. Obviously, that council had motioned to bring that closed session up. Anything further from the Orion?
No.
Great. Any questions for our city attorney representation? Great. City Administrator Blackburn, floor is yours.
All right. First thing I have on the agenda today is the approval of the employment contract for our new Parks and Recreation Director, Austin Reynolds.
I make that motion?
Motion by Mollner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Walden. Council, any discussion?
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations. Katie, please call roll whenever you are ready.
Schumet?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood? Yes. Cux?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mollner?
Yes.
We'll officially welcome Austin. We're so grateful to have you onboard. Back to you.
All right. Next thing on the agenda is award, bid award for the engineering services for the West Jefferson Water Main project. Went out for bids for it. We got two bidders back. It was Fishbeck and Benesh. Fishbeck was the, the most, was the cheapest, the lowest bidder. The packet, the information's in your packet there. Looking for a motion to approve Fishbeck.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mollner?
Second.
Second by Cox. Council, any discussion?
Fishbeck is a highly qualified engineering firm, so.
Both, both firms were highly qualified. Yes.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Katie, whenever you are ready, we'll take roll.
Valentine?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood? Yes. Cux?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mollner?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried. Back to you.
Okay, next one is a discussion item here. This is in conjunction with Wayne County Health, Human and Veteran Services Department and Wayne State University. They are distributing Narcan vending machines throughout the county. They have two options. You can do a vending machine inside of a building that looks just like a candy machine, or if you want an outside one, it'd be like those old news, uh, news, newspaper stands where you stuck the quarter in and opened up the door. It'd be that size, and it'd be mount, mounted out, outside, and they have Narcan in there and fentanyl test strips, because there are first responders that do get accidental exposure to fentanyl when going on a run. So it's good to have Narcan around and fentanyl test strips, especially if you don't know what it is. They want to put one in Gibraltar. I put this on here just for a discussion item. Does here, any?
Narcan are going to be free?
Yes, everything's free.
Chief Bullard, where's your head on this topic?
Narcan saves lives.
So we could put this machine right in the lobby here?
Um, no, I am, I'm, I'm leaning more towards the newsstand type that we can mount outside, only because our buildings don't get that much foot traffic. I was thinking at the Gil Teibert Center over by the back door where the kitchen is, because it'll be closer to the park, and we seem to get more, more activity in the warmer months than the colder months. So I thought over by the back door, there would be a spot to mount it on the outside. And Wayne State does come, and they do monitor it, and they do refill it when it gets used, and everything's free.
I have a question, and pardon my ignorance. The, I guess, do, do the schools have stuff like this at their sites? And I, I'm only asking, because I, not, not being super familiar with, with these products, is there, is there any concern of almost encouraging this type of behavior that would require this? Is that, is that, maybe I'm out of touch. I'm just, I'm curious as to the general feeling amongst that, people that are more educated on it.
So I had the same concern. When I saw this, I had the same concern, and I, when I talk to myself about it, I kind of talk to myself on the other end. So most pharmacies you go to will give you free Narcan if you ask for it. I think what this is trying to do is just prevent overdose, and what I will say is, what I've, what I've found since they have started giving out free Narcan, is the overdose rates have come down a lot. And a lot of people attest Narcan to heroin overdoses, but here, or not heroin, Narcan is used for opioid overdoses. So it's not just heroin. It can be any drug cut with fentanyl. It can be any opioid pills, and honestly, I think more lately, I have probably seen more elderly people overdosing on opioid pills because they accidentally double-dose. So I, I had the same concern, but I don't think we're going to run into that. I think this would be a very beneficial thing. The only thing I worry about with doing a outside vending machine is it refrigerated, or climate-controlled, rather, because in the summer months, when it gets really warm, that's, it can spoil pretty quickly. So I don't know how often they're going to be coming out to check on that.
Great, Mike.
But that, that's just my two cents on it. So I, I hope that answered your question and puts you at ease, but.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm not hearing any opposition to this being brought.
Works pretty quickly.
So, so if there's no, is there anybody opposed to this happening? Because I think then the next step would be, I would recommend you two over there, work with City Commissioner Blackburn, to find out what the most optimal location would be, keeping in mind temperature control, access, all the above, unless council has any disagreement with that approach.
No, the only other question I would have would be, do they, do they supply, like, directions on how to use it? So I would assume that what they're going to do is they're going to put the super-concentrated doses in, and essentially, it's like 0.9 cc's that you just kind of put in the nose, and it's not a lot. And I take that back, it actually is a lot, but you have to give it time to work, and that was one of the big problems that we would run into would be, with it being such a small dose, people would have five, six, seven on hand, and they would just hit them with all five or six. The problem with that, two things. One, if you give them that much Narcan when they wake up, they're going to want to fight you, they're going to throw up. And then number two, it can actually cause what's called pulmonary flash edema, which is even more life-threatening than that. So I'm not trying to get medical on you guys, but I, I just, I'm just curious on if there's any sort of community, community outreach as far as how to use it, if you're going to get it.
You know, we can, when, when this is ready to get installed, maybe we can have a, have a forum, like on a Saturday or something, invite people from Wayne State University, anybody we can get from Wayne County Health Department, and invite anybody we can get from Wayne County Health Department, and invite citizens and have a, a talk and, and a, a trial, and just show everybody how to use it, and some of the safety precautions of it would be a thing to do.
There's got to be some responsibility behind it. You can't just put it out there for someone just...
Well, and beyond the point of time, I think, Councilman Walden, your spot on is like, there should be some clear directions on the machine itself, because that's the point of access, obviously under potentially emotional distress for any individuals doing that. So beyond that education session, we should make sure that the equipment itself has clear instructions and warnings, et cetera. All right.
It's free. You just open that door and take as many as you want out.
You just open the door and take it, but, you know, it's, they're being placed around the county, and, you know, and just like the vending machine on the inside, I gotta just hit the button, it drops out, you just hope, you just hope...
Can we, can we reserve public comments? Public comments, all right, Woody.
Well, I guess a concern would be kids accessing it. If it's a vending machine sitting outside the community center...
That was my point.
I think it's an obvious concern for sure.
I mean, if these kids are going to, yeah. What, what does it do for you if you don't even need it? If you just, if you're messing around, you just take it?
From...
Nothing?
No, from what I was told, it does nothing. It only affects you if you have it.
We should, we should carefully consider that in the location, you know, consider the video surveillance, depending on where our location is. I mean, let's make sure we have all of our bases covered there, and I would trust that you two and City Administrator Blackburn can make sure we cover all those boxes. Any further comments for City Administrator Blackburn? Sounds like you have no opposition from your council members, and you can work with Chief Bullard and Acting Chief Simon on the path for that.
All right, great.
Thanks for bringing it. We'll be back to you for item D.
Item D is update from Benish on leak detection. They have completed seventeen miles of the twenty-three miles of water main. So far, they have found no leaks. I just got a communication from them late Friday night that said that they will be back on it this week, and they are hoping to have it complete by the end of this week is their plan. It's a good thing that the weather is holding out on that, so that's where we are there.
Counsel, any questions?
Everything in the red, everything highlighted in red is the index? It is finished?
Yes.
Okay.
Any questions or comments, counsel? Sounds like we'll have the full report by our next council meeting, based on your timeline there.
That, I'm hoping so, yep.
Great. Back to you for item E.
Item E is another discussion item. It is the load rating for the Horse Island Bridge that Council Engineering did. If you want all the technicals, I can give you all one hundred and forty-two pages. I just gave you the first fifteen that really matter.
Could you synopsize it for us?
Basically, the load rating on the bridge for, let me bring it up here so I don't misspeak. For two-axle truck, it's eight tons, and I believe that's what was posted, that sign was posted before, was eight tons.
It's following the existing posting on the bridge.
Existing posting was pretty...
So the existing posting that exists, that's there, that's the load rating on the bridge.
It was pretty, the existing posting was pretty accurate. For a three, three-axle truck is twelve tons, and for a five-axle truck, it's sixteen tons. I don't see a six, I don't see a five-axle truck getting over that bridge and trying to turn around, so...
Any questions on this report readout for...
I think we should, obviously, thank you for furnishing it to council. I think this should go in front of the Infrastructure Advisory Committee to review the options and...
Yeah, the Infrastructure Advisory Committee, I can, I can email you all one hundred and forty-two pages so you can look at it.
Yeah, I think we should set up a meeting, though, to discuss what this report consists of and what our next plan of action is going to be.
Is counsel interested, counsel could have the right to entertain a motion to get a date on the calendar now, or is that something that the council would like to work offline on?
Well, we can work offline because we have a, I need to talk to Claude and see what kind of availability he has. We have a new member, Scott. I'd like to talk to him and see what kind of availability he has. One member is on vacation this month. Another member is going on vacation next month, but we'll probably have to do something with or without one of those two members, but we just have to find out how schedules are going to work so we can schedule something.
I think what you're hearing is it's got to be an absolute priority from a timeline perspective, especially with everything we have going on.
Does that big fancy TV upstairs have the ability to do Zoom, Zoom call-ins and all that stuff?
Oh, yeah.
It does.
All right.
I made sure of that.
Virtual attendance will be seamless with that new technology.
I'll bet you the gentleman that's not around this month would love to be called in on a Zoom meeting.
Agreed.
Yeah, if it's to happen before he returns. He was intimately involved with this process before, you know, we were even elected, so...
So maybe we, yeah, it'd be nice to get something on the books as soon as this week.
Great.
And that is it for my reports.
Any other comments or questions for City Administrator Blackburn? Clerk Tomasic?
No report.
Any questions for Clerk Tomasic? No Treasury report this evening, so I will turn it over to Finance Director McEwen.
My first item is a motion to approve the Foundation Board's engagement of Plant Moran to do the two thousand and twenty-three tax return. I had, like, explained that part of the problems with this foundation is the fact that we never established a board, and we never did any of our tax returns, so we are currently in arrears for two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four. Two thousand and twenty-four would hopefully be our last return, and then we would be able to disband.
And we had a good foundation meeting discussing this matter, so thank you to the two residents-at-large that have been participating, and Councilman Cox.
And our next meeting, we plan to have before our council meeting. I don't have the proper calendar. Our next council meeting.
Council will be looking for a motion...
Yes.
Be looking for a motion to approve the Foundation Board's engagement with Plant Moran, according to the information in the packet. And Councilman Cox and I and Finance Director McEwen sit on that board, so if there's any questions, we will answer.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Cox, is there a second? Second by McNabb, any discussion?
Was there a previous board?
Amy, do you want to speak to that?
Not that I know of. It just said that the mayor was going to be part of it for this one?
Yeah.
Yes, not that I'm aware of. It just said the mayor was going to be part of it, so we had to create a board.
Is it part of the Board's conversation already to reach out to the previous mayor to confirm?
Yes, we, we discussed that matter, and we are inviting previous mayor to our next meeting, according to the discussion we had.
Okay, yeah, that way, I mean, if we're, if we're submitting a return, we ought to make sure we, we check if there, you know, confirm there's no activity.
Precisely.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Katie, whenever you are ready, we'll have you call roll.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Motion carried. Amy, back to you for your addition of item B.
And then just to kind of speak a little bit, it was in your packet last time. I apologize for not being here, I was pretty sick. It's kind of just overview of our investments, and it shows like how the interest is calculated, the different banks, where we have things at. Right now, the CDs, especially at Public Service Credit Union, are still doing pretty We have currently earned approximately two hundred thousand dollars worth of interest spread out over our various funds, seventy-five thousand dollars of which is from General Fund. We have also earned about two hundred and forty-two thousand in our pension funds as of December thirty-first, so our investments are actually currently doing pretty good as of February nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, so hopefully we'll continue to see that. I am watching because I'm expecting like some fluctuations in the market with current things that are going on, though, right now.
I think that's pretty awesome for a community our size to be able to pay this close of attention. That's a huge asset to bring seventy-five thousand dollars over the course of this operating year into our standard budget is, is a significant, significant help, so...
Absolutely. We appreciate the work you do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your diligence. Absolutely.
That's off.
Thank you.
Yes, I would like to thank Amy, too, for a great job. She's always, she does very well with all of these numbers, all of these figures. I even mentioned that today, too. You know, we just, I don't know, I don't want to take you for, you know, granted. You do so much, and all this detail, it's crazy, but thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Amy. Any questions for Finance Director?
Thanks for the update.
No problem. And then the next meeting, I know it's early, but we're going to do our third-quarter budget review, because I think April, we're going to be focusing on the next upcoming new budget, so I don't like to get them too mixed up. So that's all I have.
Love it. Any questions for Finance Director McEwen? All right, Chief Bullard, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. Since the last council meeting, the police department has responded to one hundred and fifty-three calls for service, had twenty-three incident reports, two arrests, eight traffic citations, three juvenile investigations, and five Detective Bureau investigations. Upcoming events, new traffic study has begun at Adams and Stoflet. That study is going to take place for four weeks, two weeks northbound, two weeks southbound. In news, Officer Brandon Seifert attended Brazos Training in Brownstown on February eighteenth and nineteenth. The police department is moving over to a new software program for traffic crash reporting and citations. It's going to, the program's going to launch in the next couple of months. One officer on the police department has completed his EMT fresher, and two officers are near completion. Actron Cameras installed a new camera system in the entire building. The camera system is a Vigilon. We've had numerous issues with the current system. The testing phase of the Vigilon system from Actron Cameras will be at no cost to the city. The Gibraltar School District, as well as numerous local police departments, utilize the Vigilon system. Going back into the All Traffic Solutions Report, we had concluded the study on Adams and Delavern after installation of the temporary stop signs, and the data is as follows. The data was collected from February first to March fourth, recorded fourteen thousand four hundred and fifty-five vehicles, and the average speed was seventeen mile, seventeen point two five miles an hour with vehicles at seventeen point two eight miles per hour for northbound vehicles, I'm sorry. There was a point five one mile per hour reduction in speed for the vehicles traveling southbound and after the installation of the stop signs. The data was both reduction northbound and southbound. I would like to request a motion from council to make the stop signs permanent at that location.
Thank you for running the study beyond council's motion to put up the temporary sign. It looks like the data shows that this should stay, and so, counsel, we'd need a motion from you to make that stop sign permanent.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Walden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wood. Any further discussion? Katie, whenever you're ready, please call roll.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thanks, chief. Back to you.
Also included in your packets is the ordinance officer's report, my records clerk report. I do have three actions for council. Action item A, request to purchase two eleven-oh V-15 Gen three-business laptops. The laptops will be utilized by Detective Sergeant Robinson, as well as myself, for day-to-day operations. I will be purchasing the laptops with the Bernie grant funds, which currently has twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents left in the account.
Counsel, is there a motion to...
Should have purchased the two laptops for the police department.
Motion by Valentine, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Walden. Counsel, any discussion on this matter?
I'm sorry, it's one thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-two cents for the two laptops.
That's it?
That's it.
You have a motion, and you have a second, so whenever Katie is ready, we'll let you call roll.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Back to you, chief, for the addition that you had this evening.
Yes, Mayor and Counsel, action item C. I put that on your desks prior to the meeting. I'm requesting a motion from council to hire David Jones for the full-time police officer position contingent upon completion of a successful drug screening. Just some history, David Jones applied for the position. He did pass an extensive background check, psychological pre-employment health screening, and we're still waiting on the last test. Mr. Jones has twenty years' law enforcement experience. He's retired out of the City of Taylor, as well as the City of Luna Pier. He will be receiving two years of lateral pay, which will be sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars, as indicated in the POAM contract, and I will be, more history, I need to get Officer Jones on the schedule. Obviously, there's going to be some shifting with Officer Dan Sampson moving into the Gibraltar schools, and we need to get him trained as soon as possible, so I would probably have Mr. Jones sworn in by the clerk this week, and then possibly bring Mr. Jones to the next council meeting for meet and greet, or we can do a one-on-one anytime, it's Police Department.
I, I just want to say thank you, and preliminary congratulations, obviously, with the contingency within this broader landscape. I know many departments are looking to hire an officer, so just thank you and the team that made it possible to bring this to us today.
Thank you.
Counsel, it'd be in your court for a motion to authorize the hiring contingent of the drug screening pass.
I'll make a motion authorize Mr. Jones.
Motion by McNabb, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wood. Counsel, any discussion on this matter? All right, Katie, please call roll.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Well, preliminary congratulations to Mr. Jones, looking forward to meeting him, and thank you again.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Any questions for Chief Bullard beyond the covered topics? All right, Acting Chief Simon, let's take you to your report.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. We have been busy over on the fire side. Actually, in the past nine days, we've responded to thirty-two calls for service. That's typically what we'd see about halfway through the month, so...
Wow.
In addition to that, we've had lots of training opportunities and other things. We've been working on licensing, so we've got a great team working very hard. Our report was from two twenty to three, five twenty-five. We had twenty-seven EMS calls. One, we requested mutual aid from Rockwood. Three fire calls.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have been busy over on the fireside. Actually, in the past nine days, we've responded to 32 calls for service. That's typically what we'd see about halfway through the month. So in addition to that, we've had lots of training opportunities and other things. We've been working on licensing. So we've got a great team working very hard. Our report was from 2:20 to 3:52. We had 27 EMS calls. One, we requested mutual aid from Rockwood. Three fire calls. One was a mutual aid we requested from Rockwood and one we responded to was auto aid, two here on township. Congratulations to firefighter EMT Ellen Zooks who completed all of her requirements. She is now fully certified. We only have one member who's not certified yet in EMS, but she'll be going through the EMT class that we're starting in April. So we look forward to having all of our personnel certified. Other than that, we've got some upcoming training. We'll be doing live burn at Wayne County Community College Wednesday, March 19th and Wednesday, March 26th. We're going to be splitting up the team, sending half one day, half another. And then we've also included Rockwood Fire Department. So a lot going on.
That's fantastic.
And that's all I have.
Thank you to you and the team. Counsel, any questions for Acting Chief Simon? Yeah, please.
You know, Heather Jones used to do a report for us that was pretty thorough and accurate. Is there any chance, if she's willing to get that report again?
Absolutely.
Great. Any other questions or comments for Acting Chief Simon? All right. Thank you. And that will take us to unfinished business for which there is none this evening. No new business has been brought to council, no table than referred items. So members of public, it's your time. I want to open up to public comment. If there's any members of public that have a comment for council, please approach that podium and state your name and address. I'm not seeing any comment in the room. So with that, we will look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by McNabb, is there a second?
Second.
And Katie, whenever you're ready, we'll have you call roll.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Thank you all. Have a great evening.